Outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning Department, Room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellphones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of today's meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. 4.1, Special Permit 24027. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 21st, 2024. Is there a motion?
So move, Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raimanios?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
We will now proceed with today's agenda. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, I will please, I will note that Item 1.2, Special Permit 24026, will be coming off of today's consent agenda and will be placed on public hearing for today. The only item we have on consent is Item 1.1, Annexation 24008, which is to annex the property at 5500 Cabbie Road and adjacent Cabbie Road right away on property generally located at 5500 Cabbie Road. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this item?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting this site to be disclosed?
No.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this consent agenda item?
Okay, we don't see that there is anyone here who would like to speak on the consent agenda item, so we will now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda of Annexation 24008.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raimanios?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero.
I will now ask Shelley to call the request for deferral.
We have received written communication from the applicant requesting that Item 2.1A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24004, which is to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation from urban destiny residential to commercial on property generally located on the northwest corner of South 70th Street and Nebraska Parkway. And associated Item 2.1B, Change of Zone 24003 from AGR Agricultural Residential District to O3 Office District on property also generally located at the northwest corner of South 70th Street and Nebraska Parkway. And associated Item 2.1C, Use Permit 24003, to allow a use permit in the O3 Office District zoning district for approximately 51,000 square feet of commercial floor area with waivers to setbacks on property generally located on the northwest corner of South 70th Street and Nebraska Parkway, that these items be deferred for two weeks to the September 18th Planning Commission hearing.
I would move that we approve the deferral to September 18th.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raimanios?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
All right, this is being postponed until the 18th, but is there anyone here who wishes to speak on those applications at this time? We will now proceed with the public hearing. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff member should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as a part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired, and once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Yes, Item 1.2, which was removed from the consent agenda, is now for public hearing. Special Permit 24026, to allow a portion of the existing building to be used for an early childcare facility with up to 35 children and a waiver to the screening requirements of the outdoor play area on property generally located at 6300A Street. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
No.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Good afternoon. Steve Dish with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So, as indicated, this is a special permit. It was on consent, but the reason it had to be pulled off is because there's a waiver to the design standards as it relates to the size of the fence and the screening requirements, so that's why it's going to the City Council. The application is relatively straightforward. The property is located at the northeast corner of Eldon Drive and A Street, just east of Pius High School. The site is effectively done in terms of what it will look like, because it's proposed to remain effectively unchanged. The waiver requirement, as indicated, for the landscaping and the fence height requirement from six feet to four feet is probably due to, and the applicant can certainly explain it a little bit better, is due to the location of it and its proximity and the functionality of the rest of the interior. I believe in the staff report, there's a little bit of a schematic that kind of shows how the classroom is oriented and the location of the outdoor play area. Staff has no objections to that and thinks that the actual location of that and the screening requirements are more than adequate for the proposed use, and with that recommends approval.
Any questions? All right, thank you. We will now hear testimony from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Jean Helms. I live at 6121 South 52nd Street Court in Lincoln, and I am the Administrative Director of the Unitarian Church of Lincoln. And as you know, we're asking for a special permit to rent a portion of our building for the operation of a preschool daycare. We are also asking for a waiver for the fence requirement. As Steve mentioned, this is not new construction. The existing playground is adjacent to our building, and it's between the parking lot and the building on the west side of the building, which is not adjacent to any of the neighboring houses. Also, because the daycare itself will be confined to that west end of the building in the preschool room, the noise impact will be minimal. There will be far less noise from the daycare that neighbors have been experiencing with the elementary age students who are attending Bluestem Montessori School in our building the last seven years. And also, the daycare children will not have access to the wooded areas on the north and east sides of the building, which was mentioned by a neighbor. I am happy to address any other questions that you may have, and thank you for your time today.
Questions, yeah?
The four-foot-high fence. When, when did the daycare, the previous daycare start at that location?
We have never had a daycare at our location. We had a Montessori school, and they began in 2017. They operated in our building for seven years.
They operated on the east end and not the west?
No, they were actually on the west end also, but they also had access to a playground that is on the north side and access to the wooded areas that are on that side of the building. Those were older children. These will be younger, zero-to-five-year-olds, that will not have access to those areas.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Not this time, thank you so much. All right, we will now take testimony in support of this application. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in support? Any neutral testimony or testimony in opposition to this application? Any additional staff questions? No need for applicant rebuttal?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raimanios?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve Special Permit 24026 with the requested waivers.
Second, Edens.
Discussion.
The only letter that we received was from a gentleman that basically was concerned about the east side of the building and the previous occupations there. That's not the case in, in this instance, and I think the Unitarian Church addressed it very nicely in their letter to us, and I think this would be very helpful with the number of daycares that have closed previously. So I'll be supporting this.
Yes. I would equal that, along with being the waivers in the interior of the property. It's very isolated to the building and the parking lot and the north properties there, so I'll be supporting it as well.
Yeah, I agree. The need for quality licensed childcare in this city is growing, and so I appreciate partners working together to meet that need. Thanks, Shelley?
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raimanios?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Okay, next item for public hearing is Item 4.1, Special Permit 24027, to allow the operation of a mobile rock crusher on site during the demolition of structures on property generally located on 3001 Cornhusker Highway. This Planning Commission action is, is final unless appealed to the Lincoln City Council. Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed on this application?
Yes. So I'm president of the Clinton Neighborhood Organization, which just abuts to. So it was in the newspaper, it came up at our Clinton Neighborhood Meeting last month. We've also reached out to the person putting that permit forward to come to our next meeting. They missed our August meeting, so I believe they'll come to our September meeting next week.
Are there any expertise communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
No.
Emma Martin, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. This is a request for a special permit for the temporary operation of a mobile rock crusher to assist in the demolition of the grain elevator that is located at 3001 Cornhusker Highway. The rock crusher will be used to break down concrete from the demolished elevator before it is eventually transported off-site for reuse and resale. The Planning Department recommends conditional approval of this application. This request was submitted under the Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 27.63.290, I-1 District Special Permits, which is a special permit that has requirements developed on a case-by-case basis, and for this application, those requirements centered around the storage of material and the crusher and the floodplain, as well as the proper health and sanitation measures that would be required as they relate to the rock crusher. The application was submitted after discussions between the property owner and the city of Lincoln regarding the health and safety of the community and the environment while the rock crusher is in use. The discussions included Lincoln Watershed Management and the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department, and laid out the specific requirements the operation would need to meet. CL Construction, the applicant, plans to demolish the grain elevator over the course of two to three years. The special permit will be temporary, and it will be a three-year permit that may be extended by the planning director by one year, one additional year. The rock crusher and concrete will be stored above base flood elevation, and the storage of materials will be temporary. The owner or operator will be responsible for controlling off-site dust emissions in accordance with the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Regulations and Requirements, and may not operate outside of hours approved by the Health Department. There will be an increase in noise and dust emissions that may have a temporary impact on the adjacent uses. However, the increase in noise and dust levels would be similar to or less than what was generated by the previous use of the site, and the alternative of leaving the grain elevator to sit on the site would not be beneficial for adjacent uses. The temporary increase in noise and dust is more beneficial to the area and the city as a whole versus leaving the property and structures as they are. Particularly because the elevator was built in the 1950s and has, over the course of time and use, become obsolete and somewhat irreparable, the owner plans to redevelop the 17-acre property after the demolition, and the project is a positive one for the city of Lincoln, as the demolition of grain elevators and similar structures are not low-cost or easy projects. Especially because when grain elevators become defunct due to wear and tear, they can be left to deteriorate for years or even decades in their communities, causing health concerns, occupying usable land, and becoming a general blight on their communities. But by operating the rock crusher to render the concrete, the owner will be able to offset some of that cost of demolition while recycling the elevator into useful material once again and opening property for reuse. And this application, again, it meets the requirements created for the specific I-1 District Special Permit. It is compatible with the 2050 Comprehensive Plan policies and goals by encouraging infill and redevelopment and improved community appearance, and it will have an overall positive impact on the community of Lincoln. With that, are there any questions that you have?
No, not at this time, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, testimony from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, on behalf of the applicant. To reiterate a little what Ms. Martin said, I mean, this is large obsolete grain, grain bins, you know, at, at 3,000, so State Fair Park and Cornhusker. CL has recently purchased this property with the intent to demolish, but this is an expensive process. The rock crusher, what it does, and, and the mobile rock crusher we're talking about, just so you can get an image of this picture on what this would be.
It'll come up in a minute.
There we go. So it's, it's a, it's, you know, it's a large piece of equipment, but again, this is a mobile machine and would be used as part of the overall demolition process. So what this allows, other than your, I guess, typical demolition permit, is this allows the, that rock, that concrete material, to be broken down into small enough shapes and sizes that are reusable. So what that does is it's, it's part of the overall demolition process that allows it to be reused and recycled. Obviously, we see a, an environmental benefit with the recycling and using it, but also it makes this project more financially feasible, because otherwise, that's why these things can't get torn down. It's just too expensive of a process. So overall, that's kind of the goal of the special permit. Again, this is in the I-1 zoning district, so this is allowed by special permit. I guess the key I'd like to focus on is the demolition permit and all those pieces, that's, that's a separate measure. So again, CL is applying for the demolition permit. As part of that, as already mentioned, they'll bring the whole, the property, the area that's being used above base flood elevation, they have to get a floodplain development permit, air quality permit. So again, I know some of the concerns with dust, yes, there, the dust will be managed. Exactly how, you know, there'll be some watering, there'll be some things, but right now, they're still studying exactly what, what is going to, you know, that material, what it is, what's going to happen when it's demoed, and then that will be taken care of. Again, that will be part of the air quality permit. So this rock crusher permit allows the rock crusher to be used, and then CL has to comply, they have to get an air quality permit, a demolition permit, a floodplain development permit. So those, so a lot of those key details are really addressed and handled through those, those other pieces. But this is a crucial piece to the overall demolition, and again, we see that as a very positive benefit for the community, and just, and really the only way this probably can, can happen. Again, from a timeline, this, this special permit, again, is, is not, it's not a, it is a temporary permit. It's, you know, looking at two years, probably want to give three years, just in case it takes a little longer, but it is only as part of the demolition. So we're not bringing in other materials, you're not, you're not bringing anything else and crushing it and, you know, handling other materials. It is solely the concrete that is being brought down as part of the demolition. So I really do see this as just part of that overall demolition process, but, but again, a key, a key piece of that. And again, I, I can get, I can get into some more details, but I guess I'm happy to answer any questions, maybe I'll leave it at that for now. But again, I really, I, I suppose I just want to, you know, know that there is, you know, they're currently studying exactly what's going to require it as far as like, you know, what's, when, when that's broken down, what's going to happen with the dust in the air, how, but again, it's going to be some watering and some other, whatever those measures are that need to be taken through that air quality permit and through all the mitigation will certainly be handled as, as, as necessary. I don't have the specifics, but I think that's.
This has nothing to do with the rock crusher, but in reading the report that we received, it talked about a dozer and other pieces of equipment knocking down the silos. And why would you not implode them like they do on other scales? I'm just curious.
I'm going to defer to Chris Lottenschlager on that question.
Okay.
Chris Lottenschlager, 2700 Fletcher Avenue. The reason we chose to not, we have looked into that, but it creates a larger hazardous situation that you're going to, all of that dust is going to be, at that time of the explosion, goes into the air, and you got a massive problem with the way that we're choosing to do it with a high-reach excavator that has, it gets plumbed with water and it's constantly spraying water to keep the dust down. There's dust mitigation processes on the crushing machine itself that's also attached to water, so the, it's the simplest and easiest way to, most cost-effective way, I would say as well, to keep the dust down, to keep it from blowing, because that's when it becomes a hazard to our employees first, first and foremost, but secondly, the, the citizens, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll have testimony in support of this application? Any neutral testimony? Or testimony in opposition?
Troy Foster, 2959 Cornhusker Highway. I am right next to the grain elevator. The concerns that we have is the dust control with the silica sand coming off of the crusher off of the concrete, okay? That's the number one thing. The second thing is this elevator being built in 1950 also probably has asbestos within the concrete, so now we're also potentially putting that in the air with all the businesses around us in that area. Everything that I've read is telling me on a rock crusher site, it should be within, shouldn't be within anything a quarter of a mile of it to be a safe environment. You know, I've just, I've just gone online and started looking and seeing what was out there, because for me, they're within 100, not even 100 yards away from me. They're going to be probably within 250 feet, 200 feet of where all my employees are. We're the closest company to that. So those are some of my concerns. I just wanted to bring that up so that you guys would take that into consideration. You know, the noise side of it, we get it, we're, we're a construction company, we know that's going to happen. I have no issues there, but that's all I have.
So you're a construction company?
I'm a heating and air conditioning company, right next to them.
And so your employees are, are they working on the outside?
We're inside, we're inside and outside all day long. We've got, we have, I have a warehouse there that, our doors are open, we have new equipment inside of it. You know, if I get that concrete dust inside, outside into that, let alone any of our, any of our people moving around, breathing that, so on and so forth, let alone concrete dust on our evaporators on the rooftops that we have, so on and so forth. I mean, we've dealt with the grain elevator forever. You know, we have that dust, it is what it is. I just know what silica does to people's lungs, and that's a higher concern to me and my, and my employees.
Have you discussed this with CL?
I did, I actually talked to them yesterday about it a little bit. They're talking about the water side of it, just haven't seen anything as to, I haven't seen a demonstration of how that actually works and what it does and what it controls, you know? So, you know, maybe, maybe they have something that totally controls that, I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up before you just go ahead and approve it.
Was there any discussion of them offering to pay for your condensers, filters, and that type of thing being replaced?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, because what, everything that I read, it's 1500, 1500 feet is the parameter to that, so that would go all the way to Cornhusker Highway, all the way to 27th Street, and all the way to 33rd Street from where they're going to put that, at least where it's sitting right now, at least the one that's there. Okay?
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So in regards to the dust and air quality, so the applicant said that they are going to be required to get another permit to, I guess, discuss those conditions, right? Can you explain that a little bit more?
So the permit will be through the Lincoln Lancaster Health Department, so I can't provide much information regarding that, but it will be a requirement that the owner and operator be responsible for controlling the off-site dust emissions in accordance with the Health Department's regulations and requirements. And prior to crusher operation, the applicant must ensure that the crusher has proper air quality permits from either the Health Department or the Nebraska Department of Environment and Energy. And CL Construction has noted, the operation will be using dust trapping atomizing mister to control, to control dust emissions, dust produced by the project. I'm not familiar with that piece of equipment at all, but that is, those are currently the standards that are required by the special permit. Like it was noted, that's not, that, that permit isn't part of the special permit itself, but it is a requirement. So if they get the special permit but then decide to not get the, 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 excuse me, the, the air permit, air pollution, or follow air pollution regulations, then they can't operate the rock crusher.
That's helpful, thank you.
No questions? All right, thanks. All right, applicant rebuttal.
I just, just wanted to add in case it wasn't clear. So currently, CL has engaged a third-party consultant engineering to do a study. So currently, CL has engaged a third-party consultant engineering to do a study on all of this. If there is asbestos, obviously if there is, it will say, here's what we have to do to abate it, you know, to deal with it. Is, you know, what's the silica, you know, how's that done? They're going to be doing perimeter monitoring around that site. They're really, they're focusing on the crushing kind of interior in their, on the 17 acres. So I think the short answer, again, is through the permitting. The study is underway. Before any of this happens, there will be the answers of, is there asbestos? Yes or no? If so, here's what you have to do to not harm your neighbors, and then that will be done. So that study's underway, and obviously, those permits are still to follow.
Yes.
Is that part of the Health Department's requirements, or are you doing that on your own?
Well, I'm sure it will be, but that's just, we're doing that study, we're getting that study done no matter what. Obviously, that's, for CL, that's kind of a crucial piece.
How would you deal with it, then, if it has asbestos or something like that?
That's a good, I don't know the answer. I assume either, that will be part of the study that says, here's how you, here's how you have to deal with that, because I don't know the answer until we know more.
Somebody come and have that might.
Yeah.
What they basically told us is a lot of times it's mitigated through water. Basically, you're just not wanting to breathe it, so it's the same solution as controlling the silica dust as the process. So a lot of it's using misters. We have, you know, they're called Dust Boss, which basically sprays a fine mist. If you want to think of it, it's kind of like you're making artificial snow at ski resorts that it's spraying water out there with a fan. It'll go up to like over 200 feet away to do that. On the excavator, it has a mister on it. On the other piece of equipment, they have water as well, and then the crusher itself also has water that is constantly spraying, so a lot of, and it's not a large amount of water, it's just enough to keep the dust particles from flying or becoming, I think the word they use is fry, and so that's the main...
Have you had any discussions with the heating and air conditioning company on what would be good guidance as far as their employees both working inside and outside?
Yeah, first and foremost, I want to say, like, my, I'll be honest, my number-one concern is my employees, which are going to be right there. So part of our process of doing this is they will have monitors that will be put on them, will figure out, since there's no state or federal standard, I guess, in regards to how you deal with this, and each site is a little bit different. So we will go through the process of that. They will then evaluate how many parts per million and what are acceptable guidelines on that, if there are any. We've done this many times with saw cutting. Silica dust is a, you know, a big thing that we do already, so we know how to mitigate it now, but now we're 110 feet in the air, you know, trying to make sure that we keep it. So obviously, we care about our employees first and foremost. Secondary is our neighbors. So if I can, you know, provide a safe place for my employees, then it should be very, a lot easier that now the neighbor that's 150 feet away or 200 feet away, we can also mitigate those things. And so that's where the perimeter, we will, our employees will have monitors in the beginning to see what the dust is, then we will have perimeter monitors to see how much material, if any material, we're losing across those lines and stuff like that.
And if that is the case, where it's crossing the line, are you willing to provide them with the monitors also?
Yeah, we'll do whatever, yes, we'll make sure that we can, you know, provide a safe working environment for their, you know, Cornhusker, but also John Henry's and Mapes and, I can't remember, I'm drawing a blank on the other one, but yes, all of them.
Okay, thank you.
The rock crushing, do you know hours of operation? Are you doing this 24 hours a day?
No, absolutely not. I don't want to work that long. And to be honest, actually, that's a great thing. I would say our guess is, and that's why we haven't done this, we're, you know, we're bringing in experts to train us, to teach us how to do it. We do see our core business is based around the agricultural industry. We are out in Hastings, Nebraska, repairing one of these instead of they'd let it, this one's gotten too far and there's nothing but able to go down. There's one right across the street here that people are like, hey, can you take that one down too? And we're like, well, we'll see. So, but that's what we're trying to look at, those things. And your question, sorry, remind me your question.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation. Okay, so, yeah, so I would say our plan is just standard, you know, seven to five normal business hours. But as far as rock crushing, the rock crusher operates at a lot higher capacity, so I don't really see it working more than two hours or two days a week if we spend five days a week demoing it. The demo process is a lot slower, so, you know, the major crushing will be confined to probably like two days.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens, sorry.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raiman Yos?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move that we approve special permit 24027.
Second, Ball.
Discussion.
Yeah, I think they've thought this through. I think they're on the right track, plus not only have they spent some time analyzing this, but they have yet to get several other permits that they need, and this is only a first step for them in getting to the point of being able to demolish the silos, the grain silos. So I think it's best for us to approve this and let them proceed with trying to get all the other permits they need.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, knowing that there's a requirement for other permits to evaluate and have standards around expectation of what needs to happen from an environmental perspective gives me confidence that there'll be another review, and the precautions they're taking for employees to ensure, you know, the safety, which hopefully will support their neighbors as well.
I have huge concerns about this one because it's in my backyard, and I don't think you go into this without concerns. It's a huge, it's one of the largest grain elevators in the state of Nebraska. It's been in my backyard since I've lived in this neighborhood for the 30-plus years. Neighbors have some concerns. We are disappointed that they didn't reach out prior to this meeting, that we couldn't fit them into a schedule, and that the neighbors didn't know anything about it until it hit the newspaper. I think there's some effort by people to reach out to neighborhood organizations prior to these meetings. With all that said, how do you tear down 126 cement silos near a neighborhood? We're not as close as you. I think our closest house is 1,000, and University Place has one about 800 feet. My other concern is Fleming Fields is right there. You have hundreds of children playing there every weekend, just a couple hundred feet away, and small lungs are more susceptible to dust. I think they're on the right path, and I will support it with knowing in our backpocket, we can appeal to city council in 14 days after they come to our meeting, but just know that there's concerns.
I'll also be supporting, agree that there's concerns. I do also understand this is a complex problem, and these are things that arguably need to come down, and I appreciate if somebody willing to try, and I do think they're taking steps to do it as safely as possible.
Okay. I think, Shelley, we are ready to take a vote?
All right. Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raiman Yos?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero.
All right. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda may do so.
Seeing none, I would move we adjourn.
The second, Edens.
Ball?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Raiman Yos?
Yes.
We are adjourned.